Yeah. That's more what you had in mind than whiskers?
Yeah, like a little hat. Like really?
Say if anyone would notice, I would be so curious.
Oh, that's unfortunate, but that's all right. Okay.
That is so weird.
We're just seeing two of ourselves.
How does one turn? How do I turn this?
Oh, yeah.
That's that's great.
Oh.
Oh.
I think like that.
Multiple versions of ourselves.
This is like a modern day.
Four sets.
The only way we can get a quick. See how really nice. As you can see, we have a packed out here.
You are live.
Okay, all right, uh, let's call this meeting to order. I'm not gonna use the gavel, I'm just gonna knock. Uh, any visitors? All right, make sure you sign in, it's the responsible thing to do. All right, we will begin with our land acknowledgement. All Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chawila Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. Maybe we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all those who share this land. All right, uh, if there are no proposed changes to the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda as written. Second.
All right, then we shall proceed, uh, with the agenda as it is. Uh, starting with the approval of the September board minutes.
Move to approve the September twenty twenty five board minutes. Second.
Do I need all in favor? Aye, if we've all, okay, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Uh, and next, the approval of the September twenty twenty five bills and contributions.
Move to approve the September twenty twenty five bills and contributions in the amount of one million twenty one thousand seven hundred and sixty three dollars and twenty nine cents. Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All right. Financial report.
Thank you much. Okay, so for September twenty twenty five library operations and our cash investment trend. So by the month end of September, we have the ability to pay seventy three days in operating costs and available cash investment. Uh, that balance, which does include the reserve for capital and net of encumbrances, is now at four million five hundred thirty six thousand seven hundred and forty nine dollars. Uh, we will, we do expect the second and final installment of the levy lidlet distribution from the Spokane County next month. Usually we get that within the first week and a half of November. Uh, that amount will be about one point two three million is what we're looking at. Uh, for the expenditure trend, so the library operating expenses for September were, as we just said, one million twenty one thousand seven hundred and sixty three dollars. Of that amount, seven hundred sixty thousand one hundred and twenty nine was for personnel wages and benefits. One hundred and seven thousand and fifty dollars was spent on our capital books and materials. Thirty seven thousand and eighty was spent on capital machinery for both the fiber at Five Mile and Nevada for the twenty seven, uh, the twenty four seven kiosks. That's an amount that was above and beyond what was originally encumbered and budgeted within the bond projects. Uh, thirty four thousand five hundred and fifty was spent for utilities at all the branches, including storage. Uh, and twenty thousand one hundred thirty seven was the total charges for our library third party security costs. Uh, for business office updates, so our senior accountant, Minnie Quan, is currently, uh, working on our annual inventory process for twenty twenty five. Uh, involves a lot of psych visits and very substantial collaboration between both CXM's branch managers and very heavy collaboration with the facilities team and the IT department. Uh, we have over eighteen hundred items we have to inventory each year with lots of details and records within each, so it really comes out to over six thousand line items of data that you are verifying. So it's a very, very heavily involved project, but she's really great at it, so. Yep, and heads up to CXM's listening. Hope that your branch soon. Uh, the Nevada project is nearly complete with construction, actually. We just had an update about two hours before this meeting. So it looks like the final punch list at the Nevada site was just approved, uh, and signed up on just, uh, today, so they'll be starting to get all of the closing documents ready over, over the next week or so. Um, there's still a lot of work that has to be done on the Alvin I side and subcontractors filing their in- intents and then their affidavits of wages paid. So there's a little bit of work of, of work to do before we bring that forward to the board uh, for approval to file the notes of completion of this Alvin I. Uh, but over the last couple of weeks, prior to today, there was some electrical wires that were being repulsed, brought up to code. So again, basically, it was just the raw wire that was originally installed, so that did have to be redone, but we made it.
Nice.
Any questions on financial part? Oh, and I want, I want to point out one thing. There, um, there is no financial, there, there's no expenditure financials for the, for the bond in this packet this month, this is the first time, because there was no activity yet, so didn't want to give you re- repeat information that you already gave last time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thanks, Nicole.
Yep.
Uh, the chairman's report is, we will just continue on now for Andrew's report.
All right. Uh, focus last month was really, uh, getting more public input. One of the things in twenty thirty, so we have staff conduct exercises, you'll hearing a little bit more about those later. Uh, and we'll be wrapping up our activities around engagement at the end of this month with some focus groups. We've had really great, uh, interest in participation, uh, so we're hoping that everyone shows and we get some further input to help us build that vision. Uh, late September, early October, I was doing some traveling. I attended the Public Library Directors of Washington meeting, that was close by in, uh, Loon Lake. Uh, lots of discussion on levy lidlift, strategic planning, and, uh, the legislative forecasting for twenty twenty six. Uh, spoiler, doesn't good for anything that wants to get funded for twenty twenty six as far as the state is concerned. Uh, and at Humanities Washington, the discussion was around the uncertainty of the national downwind for humanities funds. Hope to know more for that, because they are a really great partner in providing programs for us at the library. Uh, hoping to find work about that mid-year, uh, through the litigation.
Mid, sorry, mid-year of next year?
Mid-year next year.
Okay.
Yeah. There's hope that there could be some, just based on what's in the congressional budgets. Uh, but the director of the N D H has different ideas of how that money should go. Um, so it'll likely end up in courts for a while. As far as our D E I efforts, uh, this month's selection for book group is Radical Respect by Kim Scott. And for our public, uh, programming, we did our usual support for Tino and Hispanic Heritage Month, uh, as well as, uh, Indigenous Peoples' Day. In some surprising news, uh, for our collections, Baker &amp; Taylor, which is really one of our vendors, uh, for physical formats, they're, they're going under. They're shutting down, uh, they've been around for decades and decades, decades. Uh, always such a very solid, uh, company in the past, but uh, that is not the case anymore. Uh, we do have other vendors that were contracted, that we rely more on them heavily, as well as seeking out, uh, other avenues uh, now that Baker &amp; Taylor is going away. And our star stoplight for September went to our safety team member, Brian. Uh, he went above and beyond in de-escalating a situation that central with a customer that's having mental health crisis, so we really appreciate his compassion and his willingness to meet people where they're at. And as far as the city of Spokane goes, we continue to work on the budget. And no, we don't have a number yet. That concludes my report, I'll take questions.
You anticipate finding new vendors will impact how much the budget line for materials?
No, I mean Ingram's pretty reliable. Uh, you know, there's also Rodar, it's a little bit more expensive for processing, I believe that's today's Rodar.
Yes, but budgets concern the same with that.
Yeah, yeah, but as far as like getting the materials in and expending it, um, I don't think it'll happen.
Yeah.
There are other vendors that are sort of coming out of the woodwork that you wouldn't expect, like Barnes &amp; Noble contacted us.
Yeah.
To see about being a vendor, and it's like, okay, the discount's not gonna be that great, so.
Yeah.
So bye.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's, it's just, it's interesting to see industry change.
Yeah. Any other questions for Andrew?
Well, thank you.
All right. Discounts, remember. It's key. Okay. Wow, we are.
Losing.
Amanda, okay, uh, so I submit my report for, uh, thanks, Lena. Uh, for October, um, some, some highlights that I wanted to share with you. Alina and Nora Willett, um, an employee at Central, tabled at Hilliard, Hilliard's Creative District launch um, in early September or mid-September, and it was just a really fun event, and we've been doing, Alina especially, has been doing more outreach events. We're partnering with some of our programming and other staff to do more, um, outreach events in the community. And it was a really fun one to be at Alina Reports because the mayor was there, a lot of leadership were there, and so it's good to have library representation at these important community events. Um, we've been enjoying a lot of media coverage. Um, and then this includes, this report includes just September, but, um, we had eight media mentions in September. But if you've been following the news at all, we've had a lot in October as well, so that will be exciting to share with you. It's just there's been a lot of great programs we've been doing and the media's been picking them up, so. Um, so everything from our Hanford panel that had, um, over a hundred people attend um, to, to our gardening programs and our constitution viewing as well, um, which was kind of a, an impromptu event where the Constitution of Washington State came to Central Library. For the first time ever, it left the Western Washington or Olympia and came to Eastern Washington for a viewing. Um, and got some great coverage. Our latest issue of Lilacs V Local is out, I brought you guys copies, this is our partner issue, so every, every story in the issue um, features a partnership and highlights, highlights our partner relationships. Um, in addition to Spokane is Reading, um, which is a partnership between S C L D, um, Antis and Spokane Public Library. Uh, we said goodbye to our communications assistant, Megan, I don't know if you ever met Megan, but she was fantastic, and she was an in, a, a communications assistant and intern from Gonzaga, she moved to Seattle, so it's just the three of us again. Uh, we coordinated and produced a successful staff day, you can see here in the bottom right of the page are, we took a great staff day photo. All the staff in the photo are wearing new staff t-shirts, three people here today are wearing them as well. They say Support Public Libraries, which is the same as the sticker that you see here. Um, and they were, the artwork is donated by an, uh, an Etsy artist who donated our artwork for a t-shirt last year also, so. Um, we buy the t-shirts, but it's really cool to get this artist to provide the artwork for us. Um, and then we launched Pacific Theater, um, Culture Pass program, um, the tickets sold out, sold out, checked out within two hours of launch, so if that's something that you want or someone you know wants, you know, get online at nine AM, thirty days out from the next showing, and hopefully you'll be able to snag some of those.
November fourth. November fourth is the next time to.
For.
For the next showing.
For Civic or for, are you thinking for Symphony?
Must be thinking Symphony.
Symphony, so November fourth is for nine AM for not crackers, but the Symphony. So my gal. I'll be today. Um, so yeah, overall, a, a really great month. We, um, have been having a lot of really successful posts on social media as well, um, jumping on some trends that are getting us in the algorithm. Both, I think I mentioned last time, like the Taylor Swift algorithm, like you, you really have to be doing Taylor Swift content when she's doing anything or yours is not gonna get seen. So regardless of your opinion on Taylor Swift, like that's the way for us to get our content seen on those days, so. Um, we've been doing a lot of that, so any questions? Will you all get another intern? Probably not at this time. Okay. We'll talk about the budget momentarily, but I mean, it's very affordable because it's small hours, but right now we're not planning on recruiting anyone. Yeah, it wouldn't do it for free, or you can't like correct one professor, it's like, you can get that credit, I guess. But thus far, we have done work-study programs and paid our labor. Good for you.
That's nice, I would say, but I also understand that's not feasible.
Yeah. Thank you, any other questions for Amanda? Thanks for getting through. All right, and Jason for programming.
I'll be doing that instead of him, yeah, that's a good idea, a couple of months ago, so. Um, so for September, the big hit on new services was Keep the Cat Back Four Time Back. Um, so five hundred people over five events, um, so that was great on one and the high twenty four services. Um, and Sharma Shields did the panel on Hanford. Um, and there was an exhibit that went along with it, that was up all month as well. Um, and that event, you know, over a hundred people came, it was very moving. There are people who have been reporting on Hanford for years, studying Hanford for years, and people who have been affected help wise as well. Um, and there was a lot of great audience participation with that, so, uh, just leave it at that and give me the rest of the stuff.
Thank you. Any questions about programming for September? All right, and moving on to new business. I was like, this is gonna be a long meeting. Here we are. Yeah, okay.
Hi, my agenda item for twenty twenty six budget adoption. So as you know, in twenty twenty four, the city introduced a new biennial budget adoption process where they adopt two years in a row and then have a mid, mid-review as where they make any changes, that's actually what just happened on, um, October third. Is, was, was part of that process. So twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six is expected to continue in the foreseeable future as, uh, for that same, uh, mid-biennial budget process. Um, they seem to be enjoying how it works out, I personally don't enjoy it. Um, which is why we're adopting essentially twenty twenty six budget this year. Even though last year we had to submit for twenty twenty six, we just submitted, we're gonna be submitting changes based on what we adopt this year to go with our normal process and how we've operated forever, so. Um, and also, as you're familiar with, the library's twenty twenty five general fund allocation was reduced by five percent. Through careful management and cost-saving measures, we successfully absorbed this reduction without impacting public services. Since the beginning of the library's levy lidlet, our general fund allocation has remained basically flat. Despite inflationary pressures and rising operational costs, we've maintained service le- uh, levels through prudent decision-making and efficiency.
Hey.
We've also continued to have voter approval on our levy lidlet, lidlet show, it shows that public trust that we have had ever since that, the, the installation of that that was approved in twenty thirteen. We do continue to experience increases in our inter-fund charges and other mandated costs that are beyond the library's control. While we have not, while we have not yet received direction regarding the twenty twenty six general fund allocations, we do recommend the library board of trustees submit for a twenty twenty six budget that fully fund our current service levels consistent with, with commitment, the commitments that we made to voters in twenty twenty four. When we did the campaign for the levy, the three year wall, the three year wall that will expire in twenty twenty seven. Sorry. I have a cough drop in my face. Uh, so in addition to the twenty twenty six proposed budget, this action item uh, does include budget authority carryforward and encumbrances that are unfulfilled if they're in twenty twenty five. Those are obligations that are encumbered for both the library operations fund thirteen hundred as well as our capital bond projects fund three, three, six, five. So we have two encumbrances currently with the bond. One is for, um, fiber installation, we're waiting on Alvin I to approve their intent. So that may carry forward, and then the others, of course, Alpine Contracting, where it will be on a closeout process, which likely will go into the first quarter of next year. So with that, we'll get into the supplemental pages that go with it. Let me get to the third page of this packet, um, of this, I, of this, uh, agenda item. Here is a snapshot for the library operations combined statement of revenue and expenditures. This is a comparison side by side of the twenty twenty five adopted budget compared to the twenty twenty six budget we're recommending, uh, today. Our expenses, our expenses, uh, for maintaining current level of services uh, are going to be fourteen million six hundred ninety one thousand two hundred and thirty four dollars. Uh, overall spending of the fund balance will still be decreasing by one million forty eight thousand seven hundred and ninety four dollars. Uh, there is no change to our F Ds. Um, and I do want to note that, um, we'll, we'll go over revenue and get the stuff in more detail in the following pages. Uh, but the general fund allocation would be an increase of one point three million compared to the current year, which was a five percent cut last year. Uh, just in order to maintain current services over the next two years, that's it. We're still gonna be spending down our, our fund balance, and then if you look at the bottom of this page, we're also carrying forward the budget cuts that we took last year. These, uh, cost savings initiatives were the reaction to that five percent cut. Um, it's maintaining two, uh, vacant positions that we have, which is the social services manager and the current affairs specialist. Uh, maintaining the ten percent reduction of our capital books and materials budget. Uh, we will not be, um, hiring outside consulting for D E I or other such trainings. Uh, not doing any fleet replacement of our vehicles. We will continue the travel restrictions for staff. Uh, reduction of the computer replacements for public computers. And then also maintaining that, that overtime restriction, except for emergencies or departments that truly do, do need that. Um, so that's still reflected in this expenditure budget above. Um, these are not long-term solutions, they're a one-time band-ling. Now slipping to the next page for the revenue, uh, outlook, so for financial resources. The top two, of course, the general fund and the levy lidlet are our tax-related resources. Again, we're asking for a one point three million dollar increase or fifteen percent increase to just maintain current service levels through twenty twenty seven. Uh, levy lidlet came in at an increase of point eight five percent. Um, it, uh, there is a one percent maximum on, uh, every levy lidlet of the year when it's in a renewable state. Uh, so even if it had increased by three percent, you could only take max one percent, but it did not quite reach that, that one percent, so we are at zero point eight five. Um, and then as far as non-tax related resources, these are basically just, uh, trend, uh, trend adjustments. We're getting a little bit yet a better yield on our investment balance, even though that is decreasing, there's better interest rates right now. Um, and then we're anticipating a little, on the intergovernmental revenues, we're anticipating a little bit less money on the grant side of things, just given the nature of the economy right now. So moving onward to the expenditures. Excuse me, I grabbed some water. I COVIDed about a month ago. Office. So here is a snapshot of our expenditures by each department. Um, you'll see really our, our highest ones, if you look at public services, programming services, and then facilities, those two make up about fifty seven percent of our overall budget. I will get into more details from an expenditure category in the following pages, but just gives you kind of an outlook of what, what portion of that almost fifteen million dollars and this method looks like. Uh, so staffing. Seventy one percent of the twenty twenty six budget is all staff. Um, when we look at the percentages for the, um, programming, public services, and facilities, from a headcount perspective, those make up seventy eight percent of our overall staff, which is huge. Um, for salaries and wages, so the increase there. Uh, so what happened, uh, the August results were posted by the U S Bureau of Labor and Statistics. So what we look at is the inflation rate from August twenty twenty four to August twenty twenty five, and that came in at three point four five percent. Um, so per our union contract, that will be the, um, cost of living adjustment for staff wages. Let's see, where am I at in my notes? Benefits is up, uh, seven point seven percent as the budget sits right now, again, that, a lot of that is outside of our control. Um, city does continue to update and post what those, what, uh, what those rates and, um, amounts look like. You've heard some whispers on the medical side of things, so it looks like there will be a twenty five percent increase to medical. Um, that can kind of fluctuate and vary depending on each employee or what that plan is, and we don't have that information quite yet. But they're, they continue to make those updates in the system. If there's any, uh, more material updates to that, from the point of when we, when we adopt and, uh, submit to when actually rolls out, I will update the, the board at a public meeting. Any questions on that portion for? So supplies and services, pretty straightforward, I'm not adding anything this year. Um, there, you'll, you'll see on the differences for supplies, um, professional services, contract services, utilities, and other. There's some larger decreases and then some significant increases, some of that is just reallocating where we're charging the very same, uh, I won't say services that we are purchasing. Um, one of them is for like our kiosk software. Uh, we moved that from professional services into other services because the way that it's classified on, on the, on the new, uh, tax. So with, with the new tax that was introduced by the Washington State Department of Revenue, there's a lot more services they've added, it's thirty software services, so we're trying to kind of classify it and make sure we're in the right ballpark there, so that we don't have an audit issue. Uh, most of these were just adjusted, uh, uh, adjusted for use, usage as well as inflation. Um, and then our utility costs are up of it's, uh, more, more significantly than in, uh, past years, so this detective hover rate increase next year of two point five five percent. Uh, but on top of that, we actually, I mean, it's a good thing, but our branches are open more, so we have a lot more after-hours events that are being booked and programming, so we just have longer hours, hopefully, we need to run. So. Any questions on that? Interfund charges, again, this one is, is outside of our control, it's up to kind of gives you a snapshot of what the difference looks like uh, going into twenty twenty six compared to twenty twenty five. So centralized accounting, uh, what we're paying for there is really processing repayments, processing payroll, um, setting up new vendors, things like that. Uh, the office performance management, that's the internal, uh, statistics that they do to analyze essentially how each, each department is. Where, where, where their efficiencies are, as well as, uh, debt, it, it's also data collection, so there's a public software platform that they upload a lot of stats, where you can look up demographics and things like that, that also is covered under that budget. Uh, fuel, that one's pretty self-explanatory. The IT expenses and IT placement really just covers, uh, this, the software that we use, like, uh, purchasing software, things that are shared with, with the city that we benefit from as a department of the city. Uh, My Spokane, that's essentially our banking, so we get to make all of our bank deposits and things, uh, through there, and that's located at City Hall. The city indirect costs is the new one that has been read, uh, that has been introduced within the last couple of years. Uh, that covers things like the mayor, uh, city council, um, as well as city legal. There were some items in there that I did have to go to because it's something that the library was not actually benefiting from or using, so it was unjust to charge us. So there's good on that one. Uh, any questions on the inter-fund?
Sorry, just so I'm making sure I understand, the twenty twenty six numbers, they did supply to us already?
Yes, um, there still might be some changes to these going forward.
Yeah.
These are different, slightly different from what I presented at the July meeting. We did some updates in August, but it was pretty minor.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. All right, and capital?
Any other question?
Oh, sorry.
Do you have any direct experience?
Do you have any direct experience with office performance management? Do you use things?
No.
From there?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so for capital, really nothing exciting here. We do have a slight increase on our building improvements. We do have an increase in building repairs. There's a lot of damage done to Central Ranch. Anything capital when it comes to damage repair, if it's five thousand dollars or more, it's classified as a capital expense. And last year, no, sorry, two years ago, they had changed our deductible, which is a part occurrence thing through our insurance from five thousand to a ten thousand dollar limit. So we really haven't met the deductible yet with with that specific branch, but we have a lot of charges that are in the six to nine thousand dollar range. So that's fine. Library books and materials, again, that is that's going to remain flat considering that hundred and fifty thousand dollar redash in that we did for twenty twenty five. Machinery and equipment, a little bit less on that, really just so that our net capital is zero on the differences there. And there would be no vehicles for next year. Next page is really just a board chart. So you can kind of see where the FTE lies within each each department that we have. Some members in the past have kept this with them throughout the whole year, if they liked it. But not much to talk about. Okay, so finally, next page is really what the projections look like over through twenty thirty three. This is considering that we will be allotted a ten point six million dollar general fund allocation for twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven. Which is what we're going to be asking the board to submit this this meeting. And we're doing this, you'll look at the bottom line of this spreadsheet. It still doesn't make us whole, you know, in those coming years. We still have the budget deficit in the future. This is only a short-term fix. It maintains our promise to the public we gave in twenty twenty four with the Levy-Lidliff campaign that we're going to maintain current services. So we are going to still diminish our fund balance. And what I'd like to let the board know too is that we do have a reserve for capital fund balance of over one point six million. And per RCW, that does require board approval when we want to spend that balance. So as we start to diminish this fund balance over the next year and a half, depending on how things go. I'll be bringing that forward to the board to spend those dollars on like we've had a lot of those. Again, this funding just gets us through twenty twenty seven. That's it. See, where's my next note? So yeah, just just to kind of reiterate what we had talked about at the on the front page of the agenda item. Is historically, we've been flat with the funding from from the city. We've made a lot of efficiencies in how we operate. We've gone through bond projects. We've gone through a very significant increase in what the security cost is, particularly at the central branch. Forty five percent increase in staffing, a hundred and sixty percent increase in open hours. We've completely modernized what the services are that we provide to the public based on what those needs are with constant outreach and strategy plans, et cetera. And then also with the high inflation, especially what we experienced during the year of COVID and that whole situation. So even with those those challenges, we've come of fun. We've absorbed it. We've been able to manage that. But now it's different. So that's why we are going to be submitting to the board this higher budget amount on the general fund allocation. Have not done this in the past, but I think this is the right thing to do, is that we can no longer absorb that hit.
And it aligns with the public expressed. And if we don't do this, then we're going to see reduction in services that could include days, it could hours of programs. I mean, all that is at risk. Because we had a five percent reduction. And if we are to stay flat at that five percent, that's even worse. I mean, that's like a fifteen percent reduction when you when you include not having also a cost of living adjustment. So we're just digging ourselves into a bigger hole. And, you know, I think that the library provides a great service to the community and we've built up a lot of trust with the public and we need to maintain that and whatever we can to maintain our services.
So our threshold is that this is received well. If it's not, we're going to be keeping an eye on what council's going through as often for the budget. I'm planning for that on November seventeenth. Yes. And so once that is known, you know, we get through ballot measures, because we don't want to affect any of the media around schools or parks or affect that in any way. We do hope to have a special meeting early December, whenever it becomes appropriate, so that we can publicly talk about what some of those cut to services might might look like. But we don't want to get ahead of our skis at this meeting. So just kind of put a pin in it until. Are there any questions about the budget as it was presented for twenty twenty six? Any conversation we want to have about this before we put forth a motion or not? Thank you for work.
We are to make a motion. I'm just wondering that on the agenda item number thirteen A page. The approval action recommended does not include a dollar figure. Is that needed for this?
It's it's just it's part of the overall packet. So the dollar figure is in the back of the thing that's included with it. If you want, we can add it to this in the meeting notes and just.
And edit to that. Yeah, I would edit the the motion just to make sure. The idea to have presented ten million six hundred thousand.
Or is it the overall budget?
Yeah.
You don't want to do that. Don't do that.
Don't say that. I mean, I don't, when we're ready for it.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have any questions. I think, you know, I've consistently been impressed with the fiscal responsibility and the way in which the library as a whole is so thoughtful with taxpayers' money and you know, being a resource to the community. I'm really of a point of pride for for so much of Spokane. So no, this is very thorough. I have one question, just more out of curiosity. So in September's budget, there was a line item for revenue about donations or random, we've not.
In the expenses?
In the in the revenue. Contributions and donations. So the budget was that anticipating we would get a hundred and sixty two thousand. I'm wondering if that if you anticipate getting more, because I reckon it also was reflected in the next budget that it was a reduced number. And I was just curious about.
Yeah, it so it fluctuates a lot with our work with the foundation.
Yeah.
Work with the friends and the state. Those are kind of the top main contributors to that budget line. So we produced it a bit just basically based on trend.
Yeah.
And then anticipation that the state will.
Less buttons available.
I assumed I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Of course. We don't have any other questions or conversation? Do we feel ready to put forward a motion? To submit this? Okay. I'm ready to entertain that.
Okay. I move to adopt the twenty twenty six budget as presented for library fund thirteen hundred operations and the carry forward of encumbrances that remain outstanding at year end twenty twenty five. For a twenty twenty six total budget of fourteen million six hundred ninety one dollars. Sorry.
Is that number of the encumbrances? Sorry, the next of the encumbrances. Okay, those are not known and those are presented of the year end.
Okay, I'll start again. Move to adopt the twenty twenty six budget of fourteen million six hundred ninety one two hundred and thirty four dollars as presented for library fund thirteen hundred operations in the carry forward of encumbrances that remain outstanding at year end twenty twenty five.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, should we pivot or council member? Would you like to do your report? Should we continue on with our motion? And then? How are you feeling?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I I think all that's relevant to report is that the budget situation of the city is very real. And that this thirteen percent or thirteen million dollar deficit that we're in for this for the next year halfway through our biennium, where we try to address a million dollar deficit, does not include that twenty five percent increase in healthcare premiums. And the bargaining units are pressuring the city to take those off, which would be millions more that are not contemplated in this thirteen million dollar shortfall that we're addressing now. And some of the some of the issues that are coming that caused the shortfall are somewhat unknown, but what we do know is that across border border states, Canadians have kind of abandoned their tourism here. Tariffs do hurt people. We've lost at least ninety federal employees in the research field in the city. Those ninety of our best paying jobs. And so could we have projected lower revenues and done deeper cuts earlier? Possibly, but I don't think people knew those things were going to happen. Revenue projections going forward aren't great either. And so after all of the cuts we did last year, there's not necessarily a ton of room in the budget for new things. There's no room for new things, honestly, unless they're cost-saving things. And layoffs aren't going to happen. And so whatever you do with your budget strategy, please bear that in mind, that there's not a lot of room here and people are thinking in terms of a firefighter or a garbage truck driver or you know.
Yeah.
Those kinds of positions with every dollar we spend and every layoff we contemplate. And all of those are real people that were contributing to our economy. And so that's also going to further hurt our economy. So you probably all already know all of this, but just confirming that it's very real and there's no easy answers. And so what people do with their revenue options is also having to be contemplated and everyone is going to have to contemplate it, which makes that harder as well. So Doom and Woo, thank you for coming to my TED Talk. That's all I got.
Can I just ask, do you have a sense apart from what we can see in the news about your timing as a council on voting on?
Seventeenth is the goal, but I think it is getting loftier and loftier
Okay.
as decisions get more difficult to plan for and politicize.
Okay, so November seventeenth, right now.
Best case scenario.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then we will jump back into new business with tariffs and South Hill Library.
All right, thank you. So we were approached by Avista. They have some money left over in their ETS grants, which is part of the SRTC and Department of Commerce grants. And these were the grants that were used to install electrical vehicle charging stations at Central, The Hive and Indian Trail. They turns out they have some expanded scope and capacity in the grant with kind of a tight deadline. And so they turned to us and asked if we would be interested in putting in chargers at the South Hill Library. Previously, it was one that was on our list that we wanted to do, but there were some conflicts with the site that made it challenging. So it's back on the back on the docket here. So what they're looking at doing is installing a new power pole in the parking lot of the South Hill Library, not in any parking spaces, but near the trees, that will feed a new transformer. And they will be installing two charging stations. Your board packet says two level twos, but it should it should say one level one and one level two. Level ones are free. The level two have a pass-through charge that the state charges. And we like to maintain one of each. The level twos go faster, but we also like to have a free option for folks. In addition, they will do some electrical work and do some ADA accessibility work on the parking stalls. Also will be adding four e-bike chargers that will be near the current existing bike racks. So this this will come from no no cost to us. It's all completely covered by Avista and by this grant. So we're just asking the board for permission to move forward on this project and installing these and to continue working with Avista. If anything else in the plans change, I'll come back to you and or seeing as it's December thirty first, we might have to convene an emergency meeting if anything changes, but we're asking for approval to move forward with this project.
Can you just remind us from prior installations, is Avista responsible for maintaining?
Yes. So Avista maintains the infrastructure and we maintain the spaces.
Right, okay. That was my question. It's like, wait, do we have to pay anything to maintain? So that's.
No, the way so the way that these are installed, and one of the main reasons for installing this new transformer and power pole was to make sure that it was directly built to Avista and not through us. So we stay completely out of that.
Does Avista want to give you guys money for hosting these sites? Didn't know. I didn't ask.
Good thought, though.
Right, like it'll be one thing that like Washington pass through if we could skip some off the top of that.
Yeah, there is some opportunity for us as a host site to monkey with the charges of the level two chargers. So if we in the future wanted to charge an extra premium on top of whatever the state pass-through charges, we would have some opportunity to do that. But that would require some further discussion. We haven't ever looked at that as a potential resource as yet.
The library does not have any e-vehicles at this time, right? They wanted to give us free charging for our future. Just thinking, just really trying to.
They've talked about us being like a, it's like a ride-share spot.
Yeah.
They could just let out the EV experience
Yeah.
to people.
They're being a Vista?
We've never really worked out the life.
Yeah.
There's nothing nothing planned for our fleet currently, as we've presented. There's not a whole lot going to happen.
No.
And what Andrew's referring to is a ride-share project. That was the idea of bringing EV vehicles to a public location so that people could try them out and see if they like them or use them for ride-sharing purposes. But again, none of that has been materialized.
Yeah.
It's a great idea, though.
Any other questions about the EV and e-bike charging South Hill?
I move to approve the inclusion of the South Hill Phase One in the ETS grant work and authorization for staff to coordinate Phase Two planning.
Um, and authorization for staff to coordinate Phase Two planning, uh, with the Vista returning to the board. If material plans change as far as scope, cost or other terms.
Second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion passes. Alright, thank you. And now the twenty thirty vision update. Be on camera for a second. Just gonna turn the video off for right now. There we go. Thank you for your patience. Alright, so we're nearing the end of our more than a year long Vision Twenty Thirty strategy process. And so we wanted, Harris and I wanted to take a minute today and just take you through all that's been done and then what the final next steps are. So if you go to the next slide, it's just a reminder of what the timeline looked like. Um, this was broken into three phases. Uh, we've completed all of Phase One. We're at the tail end of Phase Two and then Phase Three is really just the launch process. Um, so next slide.
Mm-hmm.
Here's looking back at where we've been.
Yeah, so looking back, we started on this process back in August of twenty twenty four. When we were doing some, um, surveys with staff around what their reaction was to Vision Twenty Five. And what we could do to, uh, look to the future for Vision Twenty Thirty. Those survey responses ultimately built into some, um, staff day small group brainstorming activities. So last staff day, our, um, our staff gathered around in these kind of little mini focus groups. Very similar to the the outreach, um, that we did, um, our staff day this year, but it was very internal focus. So, um, staff went around and talked about a number of topics that came up during the micro surveys. And we refined and built the base of what, uh, became Vision Twenty Thirty. After that, in January, we brought, uh, we brought that work to the Board of Trustees. And we had a leadership and board retreat in which we integrated the thoughts and ideas of the board into that process. That was what we considered our internal phase of the of the. The project for building Vision Twenty Thirty. And that really made the the bones and the structure of the plan. And then going forward, we wanted to confirm that we were on the right track with the community. So this was the point at which Thought Exchange entered our lives. And, uh, from March nineteenth to June nineteenth, we ran Thought Exchange prompts with a whole bunch of participation. So we had sixteen hundred participants, thirty eight thousand ratings. And those helped us to identify the things that mattered most to the community. Um, and, uh, help us to prepare for our next phase of outreach. These are the questions that we posed to our users, uh, through our Thought Exchange prompts. And you can see that we had topics varying in customer service, programming, sustainability, inclusivity, technology and access. And workforce development. We saw a lot of interest in, um, programming specifically for youth. And, um, uh, some topics on inclusion and workforce development early in the in those early phases. Uh, next, alright, so then after we talked with our community members via Thought Exchange. We launched some in-depth interviews with twenty eight different partners throughout the community. And these are people that we have established relationships with, uh, for the most part. And asking them what they see the library doing in the future, how they want to partner with us, what role they see us providing. And by and large, they came back with the feedback that, um, they see us as a bridge builder in the community. And they highlighted, uh, specific need for us to address, um, teen programming. Or or services to teens as well as, uh, cultural memory, which was kind of an interesting one. When they saw the library as being the place to record Spokane's history. And kind of curate and archive it going forward. So we took those ideas and incorporated those into our Vision Twenty Thirty document. And that brought us to Staff Day this year. And this year for Staff Day, the afternoon was spent, um, all of our staff went out to twelve different locations around the city. And we held these thought exercises that were built. Amanda Scott.
Artificially.
All of the pop-ups, uh, you see that there's two different color dots on those boards. Uh, the purple was for users and the green was for non-users.
Other way around.
Alright.
Green means go to the library.
Go to the library. Uh, so we had a lot of participation around this, um, and we did it in parks. We did it outside of businesses. And it was a great way to get us out in the community visibly, get our staff out in the community. Hanging out with each other in kind of a fun, um, fun, uh, environment for a lot of them. And it was a, it was really a cool way for us to capture non-user voice. Um, previously through Thought Exchange, we get a lot of engagement with our current users. But getting people to go come to the library is a little bit harder. So throughout this process, uh, the community continually refined the things that were, um, important to them. And what we saw was that youth programming continued to drift up to the top, kind of echoing what the partner, uh, sentiment was. And, um, safety and comfort was another big topic all across the city. It seemed like, um, the community is recognizing some of the, uh, difficulties that we've experienced. At Central and some of our other branches and we're identifying that. Those were, I guess, maintaining a comfortable and safe environment is one of those core things for, uh, enjoying the library. And we learned, uh, in kind of an interesting turn that non-users specifically. Uh, were more likely than users to vote for things like sustainability, meeting rooms and workforce development programs. Um, so those were kind of interesting for us because these are things for people who don't use the library. What they say is valuable at the library. So we wanted to dive a little bit deeper into that when we go into our focus groups.
Can you repeat them again? You go to the next slide.
Meeting ability.
Oh, yeah, meeting rooms, uh, sustainability and workforce development programs. Yeah.
Okay, so the last step that we're doing, uh, in this process or one of the last steps is focus groups. So we put out a call to all of our customers asking for participation in focus groups. We also gave the option to sign up for them while we were on, um, the community intercepts as well. So if people wanted to share more, they could sign up. We had more than two hundred people volunteer. So we had to select final participants for the focus groups through a lottery. But what we're going to do is take ninety people, split up into groups of fifteen on October thirtieth. And do in-person focus group discussions where we'll be able to have deeper dive on a number of topics. And the topics that have risen to the top through all of this work are, um, safety and comfort, youth education and civic value. Um, so we're doing hosting those on at the Hive, one, um, in the early afternoon and one in the evening. To try and accommodate different schedules. Um, so those will be hopefully very fruitful. And that'll be kind of the last step of of the process. Go to the next slide.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so these are the, these are the priorities to just put them all on the screen for that have arisen from this process. Um, a place to belong, trust through people, inclusive and responsive spaces, lifelong learning and discovery, digital equity and innovation. Sustainability and stewardship, fiscal responsibility and funding and partnership and community power. So some of the same themes that we saw in Vision Twenty Twenty Five, but evolving them.
Yeah, I would say, um, for our focus group selection also, um, we prioritize non-users. And, um, uh, cultural and gender diversity to try to get as many voices as possible into the mix.
Um, and then so next steps, if you go to the next slide are, so do the focus groups. And then we'll be creating a bit a refined document that we'll be sharing with all of you, staff and public and the board. Um, website to release that information all by the end of the year. And then, I mean, we expect that we'll be refining this over time as needed as well. You know, it's not a, you know, set it and forget it type of document. We'll refine it as strategy needs and requires. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to share with you is a a legacy statement that Laura Hemingway, one of our former board members, came up with at the board retreat. Um, one of our prompts and one of our discussions was what do we, what do we want our legacy statement to be? And she came up with this beautiful statement that I wanted to share. So when future generations look back, they will see that Spokane Public Library brought people together. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
How how many of the, uh, non-users that you interacted with, like as face to face were interested in signing up for?
For the focus groups? I don't know. I didn't track that.
Yeah. I was curious to have such a strong opinion about, you know.
I I mean, in my anecdotal.
So at the the group that I was in, it was mostly the people who sought us out and wanted to tell us more because they were library users.
Yeah.
That's my anecdotal experience.
Yeah.
Um, we did send an email prior to the the interest, community intercepts to all of our customers, letting them know where we would be. And and some people put it on their calendar and came out to talk to us in person. So.
We had four hundred and seventy five people participate and a hundred and sixty nine of them were probably them.
Okay.
As part of the focus group conversations that you have later this month, will you be asking particularly the non-users about? Why they're not users? There are ways to do that in another.
Yeah, so we're we're taking, uh, kind of a multimodal approach of this group. So we're taking those top three, um, topics and presenting each group with. Both, uh, just discussion topics and then also a thought exercise. So for example, the library and civic convener, we were looking at those elements of sustainability, uh, meeting rooms. And ha- we're going to have all of the groups go through an exercise that imagines, you know, what would happen if the library were to disappear? Like what, what services would they lose? And we're trying to spread, uh, the non-users out throughout the group so that we can get a mix of both user and non-user in that. In that pool. So that was really what we're trying to do is both group discussion. And those kind of tabletop exercises around each of the youth education.
It's on the slide. If you go back to the focus group slide.
And youth education is youth programming, right? Just any.
We're trying to figure that out. So so far, it, you know, when they're, when people are putting a dot on a thing like youth education or youth support or whatever. We don't necessarily know what they're. It they they're putting their vote in a big bucket. So this is us trying to refine that and figure out. Well, when they mean youth education, what is it that they actually mean? Is that programming? Is it books? What is it?
I think there might be a huge component to that too. Some people think of children and youth as separate categories.
Yeah.
So it might be working back to that teen programming. That earlier.
I think you just hear a lot of, oh, well, maybe it's something for young people to do. Like teens especially. So I was just curious, but.
You'll you'll get there.
We got a lot of that content from the partners that has really contributed more detail as to what been wanted. And a lot of that was around in specific teen engagement and specific teen programming. Um, but yeah, I'm sure what the focus group.
Third question, please. Oh, that is, is our last. Business item.
We gave it a gavel too.
I know.
So.
Any public comments that we've, uh?
Not a deer and. Nothing to admire.
Right. Further than you, thank you, everyone.